All right, I'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order. Joanna, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Snatzinger.
Here.
Councilmember Malika.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Escobal.
Here.
Thank you. If you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or deletions from council?
Uh huh.
You do? Oh, that was just it.
Sorry.
Okay.
Here in my drawer.
Next on the agenda is presentations, Jenny. It's the June Neighborhood Beautification Awards.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to have everybody here. Could you all join me down here? And I'll start reading the introduction as you're coming down. Tonight, we're honoring the June Beautification winners. The Northland Neighborhood Beautification Program was established in 1998 to recognize residents who do an outstanding job of making their homes and their yards beautiful. The city is divided into thirteen separate areas, and we have a volunteer judge for each area. And they're the ones that get to decide who the winner of those thirteen areas are. We get nominations from city council, from employees, from neighbors, sometimes from residents outside of the city that call. And so that's how those homes are nominated. So in June, July, and August, winners are chosen by the judges and receive a large yard sign to display for that month. And then they receive a certificate from the mayor and city council recognizing them for their great efforts. So this month, we're honoring the Yard of the Month Award winners. And each month, we'll do, June, July, and August, we'll honor thirteen homes for Yard of the Month. And then in August, we add one more award called the Long Term Home Beautiful Award. So that's what we're here to do tonight. We have thirteen families that were nominated. Several families had other obligations this evening. A lot of vacations are going on leading up to July 4th. So the homes are on our website right now with photos, and they just got placed on Channel 8 today also. And then we'll do some recognizing in our Northland Connection newspaper, along with other, on Facebook too. So without further ado, I'm gonna get this started. And we'll have the mayor hand out, we have a small plaque, and then we have a certificate from the mayor and city council. So this year, we have thirteen judges that are helping us. And our first home tonight is Kelly and Christopher Carney at 316 East 108th Drive. I'm not sure if they're here.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Who does all the work?
She does.
Did you want to say anything?
No, I just really appreciate it.
I'm shocked.
Well, we're happy that you received this.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'm their neighbor and their house.
They're beautiful.
They're yard and beautiful.
Come by, we can talk. I have my address.
Number one.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks very much.
You too, thank you. Our next home is Alfonso Lara at 1113 Fillmore Way, and he could not make it this evening, but another beautiful home. The next home is Darice and Mark Dixon at 11944 Humboldt Drive. The next home is Amelia Melts at 1303 Bowman Place. We have Mike and Karen Rose at 2046 East 113th Place. And I think they're here. Are they here? We have David and Judy Wilhelm at 1206 East 111th Place. We have the Schilfis family at 10657 Corona Street, and I know they could not join us We have Gabby McCormick at 523 West East 111th Place.
Now, who does all the hard work?
Both of us.
Both of you. Well, you did a great job. It's beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
No.
No?
We've been here a long time and enjoy working outside.
That's great.
Try to make a size.
It shows it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work. Nice to meet you. Okay, we have David and Tammy Hyde at 181 East 106th Avenue. We have Jim and Suzie Capps at 11049 Melody Drive.
I didn't think he was coming.
We're here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
There you go.
And who does all the hard work?
It's your house. It's a team effort.
It is. It is beautiful. Thank you. Would you want to say anything?
Thank you. This is really, it's a really nice thing that you do, and you encourage everybody to try a little harder. So I think it's a really nice thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
My daughter thinks I'm a Russian. I don't know. She's really a Russian. Yeah. She had a great day, and she left her son to her. Gabby thinks I'm a Russian.
So our friends Virgil and Barbara Hall at 10718 Rosanna Drive, but they weren't able to be here tonight.
It makes the city look so much beautiful, more beautiful.
Oops, sorry. Fred and Irene Corillo at 10578 Berice Lane.
It's wonderful. Thank you.
And last but not least, our friends Brian and Luana Alberry at 750 West 100th Place.
All right, next, we have a budget award. Jim, did you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm members of council. Every year, the Government Finance Officers Association issues a budget award for distinguished
And Curtis, their son, used to be on the youth commission.
Really? Thank you so much. Good to see you.
budgets.
Who does the work here?
And this award represents significant achievement by the city, reflects the commitment of the
Did you make any of that?
I just moved the rocks. His own rocks. Wife planned it, everything, and I maintain that.
governing body and the staff to meet the highest principles of government budgeting.
Oh, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much again. You're a good man.
Thank you.
In order to receive the award, the city had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines
I put rock in my yard, too. All right, and so that does it for the beautification program for June.
for effective budget presentations. And so those include a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, as well
Thank you.
as a communications device. And I was gonna have the mayor come down and give this to Mr. Loveland, and then we could take the photo off.
Do that. Let me just read this.
Oh, okay.
The Government Finance Officers Association, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, Presented to the City of Northland, Colorado, where this will begin January 1st, 2016. Congratulations.
Thank you. I believe I'm just accepting this on behalf of the city as a whole, since it's a group effort led by council, so.
Thank you, Jason.
They've done a great job this is our seventh year in a row to receive the award, and we officially kicked off our 2011 last Monday, so we're back to it.
I know, I know. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Public Invited to Be Heard. Five minutes per speaker. Statements shall be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to council for up to five minutes? Would you sign in, please, and give us your name?
Serena Campbell. City council members and city manager, the last time I was here, City Attorney Hoffman advised you that you could choose to respond to formal complaint or choose not to. It is my opinion that municipal law and your oath of office disagrees with Mr. Hoffman's assertion that it is a choice. As you are all aware, I have filed a federal lawsuit against the City of Northland for the illegal actions and constitutional rights violations bestowed upon me by your law enforcement and municipal court. Today marks 640 days my support dog and family member has been at the city's contracted animal shelter, an animal shelter that even the executive director of said shelter has admitted isn't meant to hold court-hold dogs for longer than 60 to 90 days. I have been advised that Northland's counsel for the federal lawsuit, Mr. Marx, has stated Northland's responded to our request to move him to a more humane facility pending litigation is that the City of Northland is comfortable with where he is now. What I gathered from the response is the City of Northland is comfortable leaving him at their contracted shelter, where he gets no outside air, no exercise, and no human touch except through a fence, is that the City of Northland is comfortable with what would be considered animal neglect. An evaluator went and saw my dog within this month of June, and even after being locked in that cage inhumanely without all those necessary things for 640 days, my dog shows no aggressive tendencies. My question is why? Why does the City of Northland feel comfortable holding my support animal inhumanely pending a litigation that could take months, maybe even years? Locked in a cage the size of a closet without essential daily things such as sun, exercise, there's no benefit to the City of Northland keeping him at their contracted facility. There's no detriment to the City of Northland to agree to move him to another facility that is able to house him in a more humane manner pending the federal litigation. However, on the opposite hand, there is extreme detriment in multiple different categories to myself, a disabled veteran, as well as my support animal. Every day, I find myself leaving more and more that the City of Northland government, from the law enforcement all the way up to the city council, lacks integrity. Comfortable is what you have when you lay your head down at night to go to sleep, not when you're holding a disabled veteran's dog, support dog, inhumanely. If the City of Northland government is comfortable leaving a living, breathing animal in an inhumane and neglectful situation, I truly fear for the citizens of Northland. I'd like to reiterate again that the hearing that was held in February of 2015 was without jurisdiction. That jurisdictional law is very black and white, no gray area at all, and although the federal lawsuit is still currently in the litigation phase, it is imperative that the City of Northland shows it has some sort of compassion in regards to the humane treatment of animals, even those that are court-hold animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Please come forward, and then sign in and give us your name, please.
I can't write and talk at the same time.
Okay.
Or I'll write down what I'm talking about.
We're good.
My name is Suzanne Lively. I'm here on behalf of Serena. I find it appalling that you feel that it's comfortable to keep a disabled American Veterans Service dog in custody for zero reason. It was illegally seized with no air, no contact, no exercise. And the dog has passed even without human contact and love. Does anyone here own a dog? Because you're not, thank you. How would you think your dog would feel with no human contact, no air, no fresh air, no walks, nothing? It was shut down. Dogs need, now, there's old dogs that love to sit around and wait for you to come home from work. Right. But they get walked at the end of the day. They get to move their legs. It is beyond my comprehension that this case has gone on for so long. And to me, from what I, it just boils down to somebody wants $7 a day off the back of a disabled veteran. There's, somebody has an ego that doesn't want to admit they're wrong. Admit you're wrong, whoever has seized this dog. Admit you're wrong. It's okay. We'll rejoice that you've admitted a fault because we're human. That dog needs to be let go. She needs her dog. It's passed every test imaginable, even in awful conditions. It still likes people. It hasn't done anything. You're denying one of our veterans her support animal. I implore you to please right the wrong done to this veteran who has served our country. And I guarantee that whoever has seized their dog, if they serve their country, wow, bad move. Please let her dog go. At least let it go to a facility that gives it some exercise and gives it some walks, gives it some love. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Please sign in and give us your name.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Lee Ann Liu. I'm a resident of Westminster, and I've also volunteered with animal shelters, currently with a nonprofit that works with shelters and rescue organizations to provide training and behavioral help. The reason I'm here today, and this is my second time here, is because I'm very concerned about how this situation with Serena Campbell's dog is unfolding. A trainer recently evaluated the dog, his name is Baby, recently evaluated him, found him to be not aggressive, so there is no reason that his euthanasia order should still stand. I mean, there is no benefit to killing this dog. So I would hope that the City of Northland would overturn their euthanasia order, since there is no benefit to killing him. And he is the emotional support dog of Serena, a disabled veteran. Now, even if, so that is one. Number two, even if the City of Northland will not overturn their euthanasia order, at least let the dog go to a more humane holding facility, please. I have here this document. This is the Guidelines for Standards of Care in Animal Shelters. This document was put together by the Association of Shelter Veterinarians, or the ASV. The ASV is an international organization that's dedicated to advancing the welfare of animals in shelters. On page 35 of this document, under the long-term care of shelter animals, they state very clearly, "Long-term confinement of any animal without providing basic care, daily enrichment, and exercise is unacceptable." They also say, "Alternatives to traditional cage housing must be provided for any animal staying in a shelter long term." And they give examples of these alternatives to traditional cage housing. Large enriched cages, which are not the case in the facility where Baby's being held, or home or office foster care, room housing. These must be provided for any animal staying in a shelter long term. Similarly, dogs must be provided with daily opportunities for activities outside of their runs for aerobic exercise. And they give some citations to scientific studies on why this is necessary for animal welfare. A second document I'd like to call your attention to, this is the ASPCA Shelter Care Checklist for Putting These ASV Guidelines into Action. So this is a free document that the ASPCA has put out available to all shelters, and it makes it easy for shelters to quickly assess if they are meeting these ASV guidelines. Now, under, on page 29, under "In Shelter Care," the ASPCA says that "Alternatives to traditional cage housing must be provided for any animal staying in the shelter long term. Dogs must be provided with daily opportunities for activity outside of their runs for exercise. For long-term shelter stays, appropriate levels of additional enrichment must be provided on a daily basis." And they color-code these recommendations according to several colors. These were color-coded green, green meaning must. It is believed that without adherence to this recommendation, the delivery of a minimum level of acceptable humane care is not possible. So it is not just our subjective feelings that it's inhumane to have this dog locked in this shelter for one and a half years. This is what the ASPCA is saying. And they base this on these guidelines from the Association of Shelter Veterinarians. So based on this, I really hope that the City of Northland will at least consider moving this dog to an alternative facility, like allowing him to go home while the case goes on, allowing him to go to a rescue organization. A rescue organization has come forward to offer to take him, so please, please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Please sign in and give us your name.
My name is Jessica Summers. I live in unincorporated Jefferson County. I just, I'm here to speak on behalf of Serena Campbell in reference to Baby, otherwise known as Adolf. I would hope that nobody is holding a dog's name against him, as a dog has no more ability to choose his name than a child does. Does that mean a child named Jesus is better than a child named Damian? It does not. Please reconsider letting Baby go to the facility that has offered care for him for free, at least pending an outcome. He deserves that much. It really sends me to see a dog like that and to read his evaluation, I don't know if any of you have, they state that in clothes like that, how she had to do the evaluation, a dog is more likely to be aggressive. He was not in any way, shape, or form. I can't say that about my own dogs. My dogs would be aggressive in a confined space like that. Please let him go and let him be fully evaluated. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Hendricks, and I'm from Aurora.
Okay.
I met Baby. I met him. And when I was getting ready to leave him, I started crying, and he tried to comfort me through the fence. And all I want to do is challenge you to go meet him while you're keeping him in there for 640 days. Go meet him. There's, he is not harmful in any way. And those of you who have pets, how would you feel? If you had my pet, I would take that building down brick by brick. There's nothing you could do to keep me from my dog. I hope you lose sleep over this tonight and every night, because I do. That dog is wonderful. Please go see him before you keep confining him to that closet. That's all I have to say, but I'll be back. I will be back. You guys will know my name, and this crowd is gonna grow, because we're not gonna let this go.
Thank you.
My name is Jeremy Askew. I'm actually up from Colorado Springs. I've been sitting here watching this. I've been watching all you guys' body language. You strike me as very compassionate. You guys, and you, you look like you'd rather be somewhere else. I don't know what, like, what's wrong with this? This is disgusting. I've made a seventy-mile trip from home to address this. I don't understand the mentality here. I would like to ask questions, but I know it's a waste of time, and I'm not gonna speak longer than I need to. It'll be just a few more seconds. I'm not much of a speaker, but I'm just so dumbfounded and disgusted. That's all I have to say. Nothing else needs to be said.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council?
My name is Nicole Rosenthal. I'm from Castle Rock, and I too have been kind of looking at evaluating, you know, the tension that, you know, just the, you know, that, you know, there's been plenty of respect, and then there's been some disrespect, and it's, it is a little disheartening because this is the, this is the life of an animal, and I am an animal lover. I, I do volunteer work. I work full-time, and I volunteer on Sundays with a nonprofit, huge organization. And I know firsthand, I've seen, I've seen the animals that come into shelters and how they're shut down, how they're scared, and I understand that there's a court litigation that's pending, and I would just ask that, please, let this dog go to a more humane environment. It's not, it's not right to, to lock this dog up in such a confinement, and it's, it's just really inhumane. And I, I have, I have dogs, and I understand there's a court, court case pending. I understand that. But there, there is alternatives. And let, let this dog have his day in court, and let him go live a little bit and be out in the sun, and be somewhat of a dog. And that's all I have to say. I just hope that, you know, you would consider that, and let him go to somewhere that is a little more humane. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Chin. I reside in Centennial. I come to you tonight to beg you to let this dog have a little bit of a life before you judge him. And he has been through the tests to show that he is not a vicious dog. I taught high school. I, I saved kids for thirty years. I now try to save the animals, because they deserve it. We are their voices. If we don't speak for them, they have no freedoms. We are all here tonight to give this dog a voice. I would beg you and say, please, listen to us. We are a powerful group in the state of Colorado. David Ballmer said, "We are the largest lobby in the United States." We're not gonna stop. And let, let this dog have his day in court, and let him go live a little bit and be out in the sun, and be somewhat of a dog. And that's all I have to say. I just hope that, you know, you would consider that, and let him go to somewhere that is a little more humane. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Chin. I come to you tonight to beg you to let this dog have a little bit of a life before you judge him. And he has been through the tests to show that he is not a vicious dog. I taught high school. I, I saved kids for thirty years. I now try to save the animals, because they deserve it. We are their voices. If we don't speak for them, they have no freedoms. We are all here tonight to give this dog a voice. I would beg you and say, please, listen to us. We are a powerful group in the state of Colorado. David Ballmer said, "We are the largest lobby in the United States." We're not going to stop. It's not a threat. It's just what we're going to tell you, we're going to do. We will, we will get more forces here. We'll get the media here. We will do what we have to do for this dog. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Kara. Last name's Partix. I am actually the one who went and did the evaluation and behavior assessment for Baby and Serena Campbell. I can tell you, I'm going to keep a motion out of it and just give you facts regarding dogs and the situation that he is in. I'll also give you a brief background on myself. I've worked with the animals for most of my adult life, which included being a vet tech and also an animal management officer for over seven years. I have had experience with many dogs in aggressive slash dangerous slash vicious situations. I've also taught the police departments how to read canine body language and behavior, as well as taught citizen academies and school programs regarding body language and behavior of canines. I went and unfortunately had to do an evaluation, which was a partial evaluation in my opinion, because of the rules and regulations at Adams County Shelter would not allow for me to take Baby out of his cage or to go into his cage, so everything had to be done through a chain-link fence. With that said, usually dogs will become more protective of their homes. After six hundred and forty days, I assure you, this has become this dog's home, which is saddening. He was not aggressive towards me at all. I actually had Ms. Campbell hold back so that I could see his reaction towards me when I got there previous to her, because I wanted to know if his behavior was different when she was not around. The dog did not show any sort of aggressive slash vicious tendencies towards me. He wagged his tail, he jumped up and down, and if anything, he just wanted attention and love and affection. This dog allowed for me to reach my hand through the cage and pet him, pushing himself into my arms so that he could come and get more attention, the best of his capabilities being in the confinement that he is in. Six hundred and forty days for any dog, including this one, will drive most of them to be, I'm sure you have mostly, you, most of you have heard the term kennel crazy. Kennel crazy is when a dog goes basically just that crazy in his kennel because he's not getting the proper attention, affection, exercise, care, and so forth. And I assure you, this dog has not. He was anything but that. He wants to be loved. He wants to be out. He just wants to see people. I had no indication from him whatsoever when I did my brief evaluation of him being anything except for a kind and friendly dog. Unfortunately, a bad situation happened, as mistakes do. He is a dog after all. We need to keep that in mind. He's also a pack animal, and being locked with no other human nor animal interaction is detrimental to any dog's health, especially for this long a period of time. He is not in a situation where he is getting proper care. It is neglectful. It is humane, inhumane, excuse me, not humane, inhumane. His owner can't even take him out. Dogs require certain basic necessities, one of which is walks and exercise and attention. Because this is a court hold case and because it is deemed dangerous dog, they do have certain rules and regulations that do not allow for them to walk this dog. The only intention that he gets is if he sees somebody pass by his kennel and anytime Ms. Campbell can go in and visit him, which she has to do again through the chain-link fence. They are not allowed to take him out and walk him at the Adams County Shelter. He is not allowed to go out and play at the Adams County Shelter. He has been denied sunlight. He's been denied exercise and all of the basic necessities that not only animals, but all of us require and need. There is a place that has offered to take him, so it is a rehoming rescue facility called DNK Rehoming. I have gone out there myself and evaluated them. I encourage each of you to go and read the evaluation that I have done. Look at the pictures, look at the video, and judge for yourselves. I understand some of you may have animals, may not have animals, may be animal lovers, and may not be animal lovers, and that is fine, but these things speak for themselves. I would not put my name on something if I thought that this dog was going to be detrimental to society, and I would not say and encourage for you guys to release this dog. If you have any questions for me, my phone number is three zero three nine one three seven zero five one. Email address is K, P as in Paul, A R D as in David, I K E S as in Sam, at MSN.com, and I'll answer any questions that you guys have.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Seeing no one approach, we will move on the agenda to the consent agenda. Any motion, please?
Second.
Okay, please open the vote.
The vote is open. I'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is the ordinance's first reading. Joanna?
The first one is CB eighteen sixty-eight, a bill for an ordinance amending the Northland Municipal Code by Division two of section nine dash four dash fourteen prohibiting sitting or lying down on public sidewalks and right-of-way in designated areas.
Move to approve. Second.
Jim?
I'll turn this over to Mr. Hoffman. He prepared this ordinance for review tonight.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as you may know, the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals that applies to this part of the country recently determined you can't have no solicitation ordinances on the books anymore, that they are a violation of free speech rights. Nonetheless, the city and through staff and councils indicated there is concern with a lot of folks that are soliciting on public sidewalks, off-ramps coming out of, coming off I-25, impeding traffic, impeding the vision triangle, making it difficult for traffic to flow and pedestrians to flow in the city of Northland. What this ordinance, if adopted, would do would address conduct in the sidewalks, on the sidewalks, and then the public right-of-way without regard to speech. The issue with a no-soliciting ordinance is that under a no-soliciting ordinance, if you ask for money, it's a violation. If you ask for directions, it's not. That's ultimately the issue. This would address the conduct of ultimately impeding the right-of-way.
Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open. I'll close that vote, and CB eighteen sixty-eight on first reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CB eighteen sixty-nine.
A bill for an ordinance amending the Northland Municipal Code to increase the city manager's spending authority.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, a very short memo in your packet. We discussed this a couple weeks ago when the Finance Committee was recommending changes to the purchasing policy, and there was at least some consensus a couple weeks ago to bring this forward to you tonight. Staff in the Finance Committee are recommending approval of this ordinance to increase the spending authority from twenty-five to fifty thousand.
Thank you. Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CB eighteen sixty-nine on first reading passes unanimously. And I would like to note for the record that the public hearings on CB eighteen sixty-eight and eighteen sixty-nine will be held on July eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, here in City Hall Council Chambers.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to resolutions, and the first one is CR sixty-seven.
A resolution amending the city of Northland two thousand and sixteen budget personnel summary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. Paula Jensen is here tonight to answer some questions about this, but just to give you some quick background, we're recommending approval of the proposed resolution to amend the two thousand and sixteen budget personnel summary by adding one part-time preschool instructor in Parks, Recreation, and Culture. Specifically, there are new standards at the state level regarding student-teacher ratios that we became aware of, and so over the past couple years, the licensing standards have really changed that require these stricter requirements. One of the challenges is that if you have two instructors in the class and twenty students who meet the ratio, the challenge is if one of the children needs to use the restroom. Any of you that have small children, you know that's hard to make them wait for that. We've got a situation where we have to bring front desk staff into the classroom and help out to make sure that they can use the facilities. So we're, we're proposing a, an amendment here that would add point-five FTE to the budget for this year. The reappropriation would happen later in the year. Total annual cost is about nineteen thousand for the whole year, so by implementing this in the second half of the year, it'll be about half as much, about ninety-five hundred dollars. So we're recommending approval, and if approved, we bring back a supplemental appropriation at a future meeting.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes?
Can I please get the licensing code and the regulations and whose interpretation it is of those? It just seems unreasonable that you can't take ten minutes and take a child to the restroom, and I'm a little, it, it just, I know that the state has some wacky regulations with childcare, but this just seems pretty unreasonable. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Please open the vote.
The vote is open. I'll close that vote, and CR sixty-seven passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to CR sixty-eight.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the city of Northland and Felsburg-Holt and Ulevig for the Community Center Drive Street Improvements Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Resolution sixty-eight, due to the construction of the Northland Justice Center located on Community Center Drive, again, just east of Huron and west of the I-25 Bridge, there are some extensive road modifications that are required, and so the document that's in front of you is to approve a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Northland and Felsburg-Holt and Ulevig, which is one of two bidders for the project, for the Community Center Drive Street Improvements Project for a total of one hundred and six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars, and also would authorize the city manager to improve ten percent increases to that contract to a total of one hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes, Kyle?
Marcy, do you have?
Oh, sorry, Marcy.
So just for a point of clarification, when I look at the drawing that was included on page two, I noticed that there's the crosswalk, which is on Community Center Drive, and that's the crosswalk that we've previously taken out. Is that just because this is an older graphic, or is, are we proposing that that goes back in?
This is an older photo.
I just want to be sure, because a resident might also interpret it the same way that we're proposing to put in something we took out.
Okay. Okay.
Under Task Four, Section Three, and I think staff might need to come up to answer this, under the median modification design, I don't know if it's towards the end, it doesn't have a page number, but it's under Task Four, median modification design, the first access east of Huron, design will be performed to modify this access to a three-quarter access for both driveways north and south side. In addition, a westbound left turn lane will be added into the existing median. Can we have that explained a little bit? Because my interpretation is that sounds like Melody Drive's getting opened.
Yeah, there is very little change. The only real change is the, is the cut right now at Global Village Academy. That's, it's modestly looking like a full movement where you can turn left in all four movements, basically three hundred and sixty degrees. That, the one movement that we want to prevent is the outbound movement from the site to the east, so you actually cut across all the traffic. The turn lane that we're providing goes, is going westbound into the commercial development on the southeast corner. Right now, there is a curb cut there, and people can just swing in there, but there's no real median access to, protected lane to do that, so we're proposing to keep the access point there, but we want to protect the vehicles from the west, to westbound lane traffic. So the only real change is taking the Global Village Academy from a full four, basically a full movement to a three-quarter movement.
So nothing's going on with that melody access right there at all?
No.
Okay. That's what I need. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Joyce?
Yes?
How much was budgeted for this? I see that you're having it come, let me get back to the top. Let's see here. The capital improvements, the general funding capital improvements program, but how much was actually budgeted for this?
It would be in the Justice Center CIP number.
Okay, so you're basically telling me to go look it up? You don't know offhand?
Well...
I don't recall offhand. I was already...
In the early modeling that we showed, have shown council, the total project cost, including design, is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if that's what you're asking.
I'll look it up. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Thank you, David. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Close that vote, and CR sixty-eight passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR sixty-nine.
A resolution approving change order number two to the agreement between the city of Northland and CNL Water Solutions Incorporated for emergency pipeline repairs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, there's a lot of numbers in the memo, so I'll have Mr. Willitt come up and walk you through those if you have questions about them, but just to point out, we have a utility emergency response contract that we do annually, and in January of this year, council did approve a contract with CNL Water Solutions for this emergency service contract. It was for sixty thousand dollars with a twenty-five thousand dollar additional contingency. In May of this year, we had already reached that eighty-five thousand dollar threshold between those two numbers, the sixty plus the twenty-five thousand. Unfortunately, that is not sufficient to cover some of the things that we need to finish over here at the Webster Lake Promenade by about three thousand dollars. So we've got half the year left. We know there probably will be another emergency coming up, so our proposal is that we would actually increase this contract by not only the thirty-nine hundred that we are over, if you will, but then an additional thirty thousand, so we've got another emergency fund available for the rest of the year. So we're recommending approval of the resolution that would authorize the mayor to execute a change order to the original contract to cover cost to date, as well as contingency, between the city of Northland and CNL Water Solutions in the amount of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and one cent. We recommend approval.
And one cent?
And one cent.
All right. Discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open. I'll close that vote, and CR sixty-nine passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR seventy.
A resolution adopting the city of Northland two thousand and sixteen pay plan as amended and amending the city of Northland two thousand and sixteen personnel summary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim? Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, staff is requesting a reclassification of two current planner positions and adjusting the planning manager salary range with this resolution. Just some quick background that is included in the memo here. The urban planner position was actually retitled to planning manager in two thousand and fourteen as part of the two thousand and fourteen pay plan adoption, and the intent at that time was actually to reclassify the position with the corresponding salary range adjustment. Unfortunately, the salary range adjustment did not occur as it should have at that time, and this action would correct that oversight and properly set the salary range in accordance with the duties and responsibilities of the position. As some of you know, this position is now vacant, and so we believe that this will also help us recruit the best or brightest candidate to come work for the city. The second thing is that, is to reclassify the planner positions to a senior planner position. Currently, the planner reflects a mid-level position, roughly three to five years of experience, but the responsibility, the complexity of the projects that they're doing really exceed this level of experience. And so what we're proposing is that we would change the job description and change the pay plan slightly from urban planner to senior planner, and again, make this more competitive to get some people in here that we need to help us finish these projects. We also have a vacancy at the planner level right now as well. So we are recommending approval, and if it approved, the resolution would amend the pay plan for two thousand and sixteen by adjusting the planning manager salary range and adding a position of senior planner, and amending the personnel summary by moving the two budgeted planner position and two senior planner positions, and those are in the attachments as well.
Thank you. Discussion?
I just have a quick question, Jim. Why has that position been vacant all year, especially with everything we're doing?
Long story short, I guess we're just busy getting the projects moving and didn't get around to recruiting for it yet. It was, it was definitely on the plan as soon as I got here to get that going, and then our planning manager left. So we've decided to post the planning manager position... So we've decided to post the planning manager position, try to get that position filled, and then allow that person to hire the planner underneath them.
Okay. So we have a plan in place to get that, get those positions filled?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Yes?
So can I just get clarification? So we had an urban planner that is now planning manager. That person's not there, but they didn't receive their correct salary for this time this year. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, the position was...and I'll let Ms. Jensen explain a little bit more of the details of what happened in two thousand and fourteen, but the position title was changed, but then there was not a reclassification to change the salary range. So the prior incumbent planning manager went from urban planner to planning manager.
So had we done that, this person would have had a different salary?
That's correct.
That kind of stinks.
Do you want Paula to go through a little bit more, or...
I guess sort of, because that really stinks.
Okay, come on, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Paula Jensen, Director of Management Services. The long and short of it is, there was a communication breakdown, and I guess that's my best answer, and I will take full accountability for it. In two thousand and fourteen, there was a number of pay plan changes brought forward to council. Many of them were title changes. My understanding was that we were changing the urban planner title to planning manager. The job description did not change. My understanding was it was not a reclassification. The salary range did not change. We benchmarked it differently the last couple of years, but there was no salary adjustment of late, in the last couple of months, as we've moved through with creating our plan to get these vacancies filled in the planning department and get these projects done. The Director of Planning Development, Brooke, and I have had conversations, and this was brought forth, and oops, let's fix this.
That's a huge asset we lost in that position.
Okay.
I was just kind of wondering what, how, just give me a percentage of the variance now, when we switch this over, so compared to what we were lucky, or what we paid the last planning manager to what we're...
The minimum salary range is going up by approximately, it's about thirty percent.
Any other questions?
Did you do an exit interview with the last person held this position?
Human Resources conducted an exit interview, yes.
For a thirty percent, you know, increase in salary, did the job description change at all?
We have refined the job description, is that correct, Brooke? Yes, and updated it to make sure that the education requirements, the years of experience required, the certifications we want are now in there and will be part of that posting. The job description, when we changed the title in two thousand and fourteen, the job description did not change. Those requirements have now changed as this salary range is changing also.
So how did you determine the changes?
The job description changes? I'm going to let Brooke speak to that.
Thank you. Brooke?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I also just don't want to have Paula here stand up in front of you and take full responsibility. I take responsibility for this as well. First time asking for a reclassification back in two thousand and fourteen, did not fully understand the process, and a lot of my communication on this effort was through the city manager's office, in which was asking for this request and clearly didn't make the request correctly. So I don't want you to think that this was, it's, in terms of communication, it was not clearly understanding what was expected for that. So to answer your question specifically about regarding the job qualifications, one of the things that we've done is we have upped the years of experience there. It used to be, I believe, five years of experience. We're now asking for seven years of experience with, I believe, three to five years of senior management experience, as well as the ability to also manage and understand projects and processes and putting together RFPs, that type of stuff. And in addition to that, experience with mentoring and training staff and onboarding.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions?
I just wanted to make the comment that this is an increase of nearly fifty-seven-thousand dollars, or more than fifty-seven thousand dollars each year. That's a whole nother position we could hire in the city, and it's, this is a pretty significant increase, and I guess I'm kind of bothered by the fact that we let a really good staff member go, and if it was me, this certainly would have been a consideration in my leave in the city, so I'll just leave it at that.
Any other discussion? Thanks, Brooke. Thank you, Paula. Okay, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR seventy passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR seventy-one.
A resolution authorizing the city's purchase of property generally located at four-twenty-one West One Hundred and Twelfth Avenue, and authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents to complete the transaction.
Move to approve.
Second?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, again, over the last several weeks at City Council Direction, I've been negotiating along with Mr. Hoffman to purchase property located at four-twenty-one West One Hundred and Twelfth Avenue. It's owned by the Berry family, and attached to the memo is a contract to buy and sell real estate in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. We are projecting a closing date of July twenty-second, so relatively quickly. Attached to the memo then, as the clerk noted, is a resolution that would authorize the purchase of property generally located at four-twenty-one West One Hundred and Twelfth for the purchase price of four-hundred-and-twenty thousand, and further authorize myself, the city manager, to execute the necessary documents subject to city attorney approval as to the legal form of the documents. Also wanted to point out that I'm able to answer any questions about grants that come up. If you have any more detailed questions, Ms. Peterson gave me a lot more background about what type of grants we'll be applying for if those questions come up tonight, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Discussion? Here, Kim?
I'm voting no for this this evening. I think that we're overpaying, and we have no plans for the property. We have some ideas of what we might want to do with it, and I think with all the other projects that we have going on right now, this is money that is much better spent on those current projects, where we're going to have to go out and get financing that's just going to increase the costs on some of those. So I'm, I just don't think that we need to do this at this time.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes?
I, for one, think it's a great opportunity for the community, that piecing together the entire water tower site, I think is going to be really beneficial once the PD gets done. I think that it's really going to offer an opportunity for an entryway into Northland, kind of from the west side of the community, and I think that, you know, there was a lot of discussion and research that went into it, and I'm not sure if council knows what else can really go on that property, and with us doing such a nice project right on the other side, I think that a lot of people feel that it, you can't have just a kind of ugly vacant property next to, you know, what's going to be a jewel in Northland for a long time, so. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for the community, and hopefully we can do something really neat with it, and get some resources from the county and other different authorities to help develop it.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else?
I just wanted to ask, as far as the grant cycle was concerned, if we're doing some park improvements or whatever it is, and we're going to do this ask for that in August, it's not competing with any ongoing things, because it seems like this is being fast-tracked, so splash pad that we were going to go for grants for, Fox Run Open Space, things that have been ongoing for a while, they're not being pushed aside for this, are they?
The Fox Run Open Space, I'm not sure we were applying this cycle, but we definitely were applying for the splash pad. And so Amanda had informed me that she thinks she can combine both of the splash pad projects, if you will, into one, so it's one application, and then this would be the second one. They typically do not approve more than two per jurisdiction, so we were kind of putting this one in front of Fox Run Open Space. That's correct.
Which I have to say really irritates me, because that's only a few years old that we were talking about, and we got matching money from that project, from Suncor. That, I don't like that. I don't know why that project keeps getting pushed back, so I just had to give you that sentiment from me, so...
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have one more question. Is the, is the property clear, the title's clear, that has been cleared up?
It is. We have a commitment. There are some title issues that will be resolved at closing, but there are no exceptions to title from what we've received as the initial title commitment from the title company that are of concern.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say that I also agree that purchasing the property at this time is really necessary. We can't have an eyesore like that into, coming into the city, so that's one of the reasons that I support this, and I think that it's the right time to do it. If we wait, it's going to end up costing us more, I believe.
Yes. I think I've agreed with Kim as far as, like, if this was too high to purchase, and the only reason that I'm going to be voting yes is because we're going to get grant money, so I feel like the pressure's on to find it, however, it needs to be found, whether it's Adams County or what, but I guess I caved on this one.
Kim, anything else?
Yes? Good question. So you're still going to continue researching for more grants and finding more grant money?
Yes, absolutely. The ones that Amanda provided me a lot of details on were the Adams County Open Space Grants, but we're definitely going to look for others as well. The analysis she gave me is that we'll typically ask for sixty percent of our acquisition costs to be reimbursed. Typically, things are oversubscribed, and so the board, rather than just denying some applications in recent years, has just asked everyone to kind of take a bit of a haircut, if you will, and so we're hoping we would get fifty percent if we ask for sixty. Then, when we decide we're going to do something more active, or even passive on the property in terms of developing it, we can go for another round of grants for those capital improvements at that point, but we're hopeful that we can get about half of this back through the Adams County Open Space System.
Okay, and then to go off the Carol's too with the Fox Run Open Space, when do you anticipate on putting that through as well? She said not this cycle, is it the next cycle that you're anticipating?
They have two per year, so the next one that would be available would be February for authorization and approval in April then.
And you are planning on submitting that grant?
I don't know for sure on that one. I have not confirmed that with Ms. Peterson, but I will definitely follow up and get back to all of you with the answer on that.
I would, I would encourage you very strongly to do that.
Joyce?
Yes?
Can I just make a request? Can we have this, can we please add this discussion item to the study session? Because I, it really ticks me off that we're going to drop something that we'd already had planned, and like Carol said, rushing this through, and I, you know, maybe there's a plan, if we can get that funding back, then we'll put that money towards the Fox Run projects that we have already have on docket and things like that. I don't think that we need to be pushing other things that we've already discussed just down the line further.
Well, I mean...
I don't know if the rest of you...
I agree.
Would like that, but it's...
I agree.
Maybe a point of clarification, because I'm not as familiar with that specific project, but if it is in our capital improvement program, we would have identified a funding source, and so was it, I guess, portrayed to all of you that the Adams County Open Space Grants would be a supplement to that project?
Yes, yes, very much so.
Okay, understood.
And I just wonder why it keeps getting the backseat, I guess. So clarification from Amanda would be great as to what is the situation with that project?
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm just wondering also, you know, if there isn't an opportunity of other grants, if you're not going to submit this one this year, that maybe there's another grant somewhere that can fulfill the same purpose.
We could definitely look into those. The other ones that I'm familiar with are much more competitive and statewide, such as GOCO, and they, with counties that are somewhat urban and have an open space program like us, like Boulder, like Jeffco, a lot of times we don't score as high on those statewide grants where people are applying, where they don't have a county-wide open space program, but we absolutely are going to look at all stones unturned here to make sure we...
And I appreciate that. I guess when it comes back to the study session, or maybe it needs to be clarified, that when staff decides to make a change, that the council is expecting something to happen, that it comes back to council, that you don't, not you, but I mean, staff in general, doesn't make that change without us agreeing to it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make sure and provide an update to all of you in my Friday report, and then we can decide if we want to have the study session to add that item.
Thank you.
Just one more note.
Yes?
If we could include some of the different grants you said that are statewide, that are more competitive base, if we, I mean, if you were aware of some of them, that you maybe can list them in your report as well, so we can look into them as well and see what we can do.
Your bet.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. I'll close that vote, and CR seventy-one passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Snitzinger.
Thank you. Next is CR seventy-two.
A resolution of support for left Colorado vote initiatives ninety-eight and one forty.
Move to approve. Second? Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I brought this up, I think, at your last regular meeting. This is a request from the Metro Mayor's Caucus to support Initiative ninety-eight and one forty, and so the resolution that's in front of you would do that. Just to remind everyone in the audience, Initiative ninety-eight would open primary elections to Colorado's one-point-three-million unaffiliated voters, and Initiative one forty would restore Colorado's presidential primary election, replacing the caucus system that was implemented in two thousand.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR seventy-two passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion items, and the first one is the Northland Justice Center update. Steve? And Jim, I don't know who's...
I'll turn it over to Mr. Grace.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to give you our regularly scheduled update. It's the fourth already. I think we're moving in a good direction, so I'll let you know how we stand, and I also want to close out our continuing discussion on some of the mechanical systems options that we've been talking about during this past month and answer any outstanding questions you have. So for the regular monthly update, again, there are no changes to the design budget. The next milestone in our design is about four weeks from now. We expect to have a hundred percent of design development, and if you recall, that's sort of a second major step in the design. We have the schematic development, which is sort of just those single-line drawings. Design development's going to be tying all the systems together, and then after that, the last phase would be construction documents, where our architects are actually going to build blueprints that our contractor is going to build this building from, so a very detailed set. So in a month from now, we should have that, or be ready to transition to that next phase. Last Thursday, our architectural team came out, had a pretty good full-day review session with staff, with courts, with the police department, Public Works, and we went over some of the mechanical system alternatives that we'll talk about tonight. We looked at further refinement of the site plan. We looked at some of the materials that we'll be using for the facility, and basically just advanced the design so that they can go back and use this last month now to finish off the hundred percent design development phase. One thing, and we don't need an answer tonight, but I'd certainly like your input or your thoughts, we talked about it before, is the public rollout, the opportunity to have public engagement with the design as it stands now, or will stand at the end of a hundred percent design development. The next time the full, the architects and their partners will be out as a group, will be the first week of August, and then again about two weeks later, right in the middle of August, what we'd recommend, or we'd like you to consider, is something similar to how the Walmart project was rolled out to the public, where we essentially establish a number of stations, where we have a lot of visual gates, if you will, and the architect there, our team there, be able to answer questions, provide, you know, the visual concept's probably the most important thing, and just have the expert explaining why we made the decisions we did and to allow for comment. So please keep that in mind, and over the next few weeks, I think we'd like to really nail something down, to line up the right folks to come out, to pick a venue. I think last time we used the senior center, maybe the same thing would work, maybe we use M and O at the rec center, but let's choose a venue that is welcoming to the public, figure out what we're going to need to set that up and how we want to conduct it, have refreshments, you name it, but let's make it a, you know, first-class event, just like we want to do with everything associated with this facility. The last piece that I really want to give you an update on is the fact that we did put out the RFP two weeks ago for the C Mar, for the actual general contractor that's going to be building this. We had a mandatory pre-bid conference the same day last week, Thursday, when our architect was out, because he's going to be a key member of that team when we bring the contractor on board. So I was pretty enthusiastic about the turnout. We tar bids several specific national and local contractors that have built this type of facility in the past and used this type of contract in the past, and they all attended. We had some others attend, just from looking at the solicitation posted on BidNet. Between 30 and 40 different firms represented, prime and subcontractors. So I think there's a lot of interest and community. This is definitely a high-visibility project, a good opportunity for the right firm. So I'm looking forward to bids coming in at the 2nd of August when this project closes out. I hope we have a couple of strong competitors to choose from, and I'm looking forward to working through that selection process where we interview and we actually pick the best partner going forward. And if that's the point where our designer is going to kind of fall in lockstep with the contractor, and they'll start providing inputs to the design, saying, hey, I understand where you're going, but in this market, this makes more sense, or here's a better way of building things, and have that kind of give and take. So we're getting there, or the process of going forward the way we'd like to see it. Okay. The last thing I wanted to go over with you is hopefully to close out or get your recommendations on some options for the mechanical system. About a month ago, we mentioned that we can use a very, a very low-cost, what I call baseline system, which is simply forced air heating and evaporative cooling. But we offered a kind of a state-of-the-art option to go along with that. And following that initial conversation, we came back with several options, but of course, probably without the guidance or the background that maybe you, the council is not mechanical engineers, shouldn't be put in a position of trying to make a decision, you know, just throwing out a whole host of things. So two weeks ago, we talked about just picking four specific options, and hopefully we gave you the information you need to understand where we're going with each of them. There's a few things I wanted to point out, though, that I need to update from the memo. The first thing is the fact that, well, would it be helpful to kind of do a very quick synopsis of each one of the options before I proceed?
Spirit? Yes?
Okay. Again, the baseline system is simply electric forced air heating and evaporative cooling. It's very simple, tried and true. But over a 20-year lifetime, and then beyond that, a 50-year lifetime, there's going to be high energy costs, that you're paying a lot for that electric heating, essentially. The next option uses chilled beams, which essentially is an energy-efficient fixture that goes into the ceiling like a fluorescent light fixture, but it allows the room or the space that it's in to cool without bringing in outside air. It just runs chilled water and through convection. The cold air around that drops down into the space, and the warm air rises up to the top. So it's a, it's much more energy-efficient type of cooling. That's coupled with traditional hot water heating system. So it's a, it's definitely a step in the right direction. And we, our mechanical engineer calculated about an eight-year payback period for that system, because it, again, it comes at a premium, then it pays itself back. The system that turned out to have the lowest cost of all over that 20-year life cycle is a radiant heat option, where you have a hot water heat embedded in the floor and a lightweight cement, essentially. And that works, you know, it's an old technology, it's been around for thousands of years, actually, and it's energy-efficient. The warm water flows throughout the floor and just rises up into the space. So that would be coupled with the traditional cooling system. There are some facilities that are trying to run cold water through as a way to chill the space, but that's a little bit more advanced than where we are right now. It's not necessarily a proven technology. So we'd couple the heating embedded in the floor, the radiant system, with a standard cooling system. So again, a more energy-efficient option, in fact, the lowest cost based on our engineer's calculations. The final option is a hybrid, where we take the best of each of those two systems. We use the chilled beams for cooling, and we use the radiant heat in the floor for warming the space. That has a slightly higher cost, which I'll get into a little bit more, but it has a, it's certainly a higher degree of thermal comfort, and I'll explain what I mean by that. So with that background, the one correction I wanted to add immediately is when I compared that radiant heat with the hybrid option, in the discussion, I mentioned that it's about $27,000 more expensive for the initial construction. And then in my recommendation, I mentioned that same $27,000, and I talked about the fact that that's over 20 years. That's incorrect. That was an error when I wrote that recommendation. In fact, it's $27,000 in the upfront cost, and over 20 years, the hybrid, or the radiant heat system could potentially, according to this model, save over $100,000 in energy costs. It is actually the most energy-efficient. So please take note of that.
Can I just clarify something real quick?
Yes.
And so you said with the radiant heat system that you're going to use forced air, or what kind of, how are you going to cool the facility then, with the radiant heat system?
It would be an evaporative cooler.
And then with the chilled beams, you would heat the-
Just a hot water circulation heating, so-
So you could, you can heat and cool with the chilled beams, but you wouldn't be able, you could only heat with the radiant heat? Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah. If you start with a standard electric heat and evaporative cooling, the chilled beams replaces the cooling system with more energy-efficient cooling, the chilled beams, but still going to use the hot water circulating through the building like a typical facility. If we use just the radiant heating, we'd use the same evaporative cooling, this is typical structure. So each of those options replaces one or the other component. The hybrid actually combines both.
So just the chilled beams by themselves, the standalone chilled beams option?
Right.
You could heat the facility off of the beams as well?
No, you couldn't.
So that's what I'm asking, how would you heat the facility on the standalone chilled beams option?
We'd use the standard hot water circulation heating that would, that would go into any typical facility. It's one step above the electric heat. It's circulating hot water through, from a furnace through-
Oh, like a boiler system?
Yeah, a typical boiler.
Gotcha.
So your base, your energy-efficient cooling, your energy-efficient heating, and then the hybrid, which combines the two at a slightly higher cost.
So I'm looking at this, and really, the only reason to go with the hybrid system would be for comfort, and is that-
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. When I talk about thermal comfort, the real issue, radiant heat is good for, I guess, more of a steady-state system, where you don't have to make frequent changes, or you don't have to make quick changes. Think about a big cruise ship versus a little speedboat. For areas of the police station that are going to be used infrequently, or something like the crime lab, some areas that can be held at roughly steady temperature, it's the most energy-efficient way to provide the heat or cooling to that space. But on the other hand, some spaces that fluctuate, so think about a training room or roll hall where you suddenly have a big crowd come in, radiant heat, it doesn't give you that responsiveness to cool a large space quickly. So it could adjust, it could get there, but by the time it did, the meeting may have come and gone. The courts are only going to use certain days a week, but again, you may have a lot of people out in the waiting area or in the courtroom itself. And again, by the time you make those adjustments, even though we'll have a pretty good control system that we can program for days of the week, if we have to bring the heat up or put cooling up in the summer, it just takes longer to do it. So it's not, for certain areas of the building, it would probably work just fine. For other areas that have to change or respond to the users of that space, it just doesn't give you that flexibility. So that really is the difference, you're right.
And chilled beams are more responsive than an evaporative cooler?
Yes, yeah. The combination of the radiant heat chilled beams really lets you kind of fine-tune the temperature and keep it within. Now, with all that said, there are certainly things you can do from an operations standpoint to sort of control your costs. You can set parameters where an occupant just can't come in and, you know, drop the air AC to 60 degrees because they like freezing cold. You can sort of control as the, as the building maintainer, what those parameters are. So even though it's, it's a system that gives you that flexibility, you can still set some parameters in place to try to be a little bit more energy-efficient.
What kind of a system do we have in the council chambers currently? Do you know what's in here?
What's in here? I assume it's forced air, just evaporative coolers.
Because, let me tell you, it gets pretty dang chilly in here. I'm freezing right now because that's been adjusted tonight. And that's happened very rapidly. So what, why can't we use the same whatever system we have here?
We could, and that's what that baseline option is. And it's worked for the last 100 years. That's sort of the standard mechanical system that goes into industrial or commercial buildings. It's just not the most energy-efficient approach. And I think some of these other options give you a better system that will pay for itself within less than 10 years.
So there is no, no payback on the base system?
Correct.
That's just straight out every moment?
Well, thank you, and that's my last, that's the last thing I wanted to explain. There's a question about payback period, too. How our engineer calculated those paybacks were kind of a two-part process. They looked at the total cost of each of those four systems, so what it would cost to install the components of the system. We're going to require a generator as backup for this critical facility. So the baseline system generator's a lot bigger, because it has to provide more electricity. For these other options, they can be a little bit smaller. So the components, the generator, and the solar infrastructure that we agreed to, that's the initial capital investment. Then they looked at the operating costs for each of these four options over the, over that lifetime, and they looked at things like the amount of energy it's going to consume each year. They added an inflation factor for that energy use, assuming that it's going to kind of grow steadily as it has. They looked at depreciation, and they looked at the required maintenance for those systems. And that gives you an annual operating cost. So the payback period is essentially, the baseline's just the yardstick you're comparing everything else against. So for the other three options, they said you're paying a certain premium above that baseline. If you divide that additional cost by the savings you can get from that annual operating budget, that is your payback. So one of them's about five years, one's about six, and one's about eight.
I have a breakdown, too, from an email, if you want me to forward it on to you, to help me understand that all as well, because-
Sure.
-it confused me as well. From looking at this, to me, the most energy-efficient option is the radiant system.
It is.
And it's the quickest payback. And like I said, the only, the only difference between the two, that it's not more energy-efficient, hybrid system's not more energy-efficient than the radiant system, is that thermal comfort. And, you know, the evaporative cooler is, you know, like Kim pointed out, is working in here tonight. So I don't know, that's kind of the way I'm leaning. I don't know if there's anything that, I know that the recommendation is hybrid, so I'm not quite sure, other than the thermal comfort, if there's anything that outweighs the radiant system for me.
No, I think your assessment's spot on. It's the most energy-efficient, and again, this is from a model, and we're really not going to capture those costs until we get a couple of years' worth of energy data. But our best indications are the radiant heat give us the most energy-efficient system, it pays itself back in less than six years, and-
And it's a 5.2-year payback, and over 20 years, it's a million dollars that you save from the base system.
Right.
You know, and so that's a million, I mean, that's a significant amount of money. And so to me, that's the most fiscally responsible thing to do with the taxpayer dollars. If you're going to go for the less expensive option in the forefront, but in the long run, you're paying a million dollars more, I don't know if that's-
I think any of the options are a wise investment, and certainly, the decision to go with solar is going to pay itself back. I think that's, that was the right decision. So between these alternatives, I think we tried to provide a recommendation that would be, compared to the baseline, certainly would save the city money in the long run, and just look at what, how we could provide the best comfort or operational efficiencies for staff and for visitors and that type of thing, but I'll-
But in your opinion, I mean, is it going to be astronomically different to have chilled beams compared to an evaporative cooler? I mean, the building's still going to be at a comfortable setting, I would imagine. So, I mean-
I'd estimate by and large, 90% of the time, and 90% of the spaces would be served without a problem for those high occupancy areas, or high-traffic spaces, or, you know, extreme temperatures in the summer and the winter, where there, we have those outliers. I think that's why we'll have to rely on the control system being operated the right way, being able to make adjustments ahead of time and plan for those events. So again, I think any, our recommendation was based on a compromise over the most efficient system and some thermal comfort, but I'm open to any decision at this point. And the thing we need in relative short order is to come to that decision on the mechanical system we choose, because over this next month, that's when the architect is going to pull in his mechanical engineers, the structural guys, and say, here's the direction we got, now we can start making everything fit together. So I'll look for your decision. Thank you. Any other questions for me?
Good.
Did I hear a question?
I don't have a question about this, but it goes back to the budget, so Carol, go ahead.
Let me go first. Okay, so you know where I'm coming from, and I really haven't changed my tune. I really believe in the base system, and I feel like I've gone out of my way to give the solar at 1.1 additional. I really have the problem with the procedure of how this has gone down. And I said it the last time we met, is that I think if this was the system that you wanted, I wish that you had just priced it that way and put it in, and somehow tried to cut corners to make the budget come in with a number that I personally feel comfortable with. I feel that it's over right now, and I just realized we have so many projects going on right now, and I want to be fiscally responsible with the money and make sure that some of the other things get done. So really, for me, it's procedural. If you had put a hybrid system in there and somewhere along the line, sharpened pencils to come down on something else to still stay in the budget that was, I'm comfortable with, I would have been okay. But I'm not, so my vote tonight is still, I'm going to stand with the base and solar and feel like that I have been generous at that point.
Good.
Rita?
Yes.
Okay, Mercy?
So my question actually goes not specifically about this item, but since we're talking about the Justice Center. I met with the city manager after the meeting that I missed and tried to wrap myself around some of the numbers that were talked about on the spreadsheet, and I talked about how my concern is that when I look at all the spreadsheets, it doesn't appear that all the numbers are on here. And I have literally gone back over this over and over again. So at the next meeting, can we please get this cost analysis current, in where you say everything is on here? Because when I look at the previous, and I know we've said it was in advance, but there's a line item on here on your draft sample project budget that was $63,000 for permits. So am I to assume that that's the $69,000 that's at the bottom that says permits and fees, because then that number's higher? And I can't find the $750,000 on the cost analysis budget for all the communities that are drive. And so when I look at this number, and after I talked to Jim about the financing number, we went the, with the higher number over here, that $22,000 is not a real number. Jim, am I correct that that number is looking like a little more like $28,000?
In which line item again, I'm sorry?
When we're looking at the high total on that spreadsheet.
Oh, on the large 11 by 17?
The one that we've been told to look at from the contractor. Is that correct?
So the high, medium, and low?
The high, medium, and low. We took the high, and all those numbers are not in here. And when you and I met, we started talking about the finance number and the missing numbers, and we got to 28, did we not?
28 million? Yeah, we did.
Okay, so I just want to point out, the numbers you're looking at on here are not the numbers. And so when I keep beating a dead horse on this, it's not because I don't want a Justice Center. It's that when I walk through that Walmart that we talk about, and a resident pulls me over and says, what is this going to cost me? And I throw out a number that says 22, and a few months later, I come back and say, oh, I meant 28. That doesn't go over well. And it's one thing for staff to say it, it's another thing for us not to be able to say it, because we're the ones that residents stop us and ask us and call us and hound us, and rightfully so. It's their Justice Center, too. So I'm not trying to make anybody upset or keep driving this home, but I need a spreadsheet that tells me the real number with all of this in, and now the discussion about the MEP tonight. That's just my request.
I totally agree. I mean, we have to know what the real cost is, and I think most of us have asked for that number repeatedly, and we still don't really know for sure what it is. And can I just get, can you send me the RFP as well for this project? I don't, I recall it coming out to us.
For the C Mar?
Yes, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes. Can I, I just wanted to make a comment. I just wanted-
I just wanted you to know that I understand what you're saying, and, and I totally get it. I am leaning more towards the radiant heat.
Okay.
And my reason for that is that I get no payback on the base project or the base cost. And I really think that we have to look at getting some money back. So that when I'm no longer here, the younger, you know, younger people can enjoy that, you know, less cost and everything. So my, my thought is to go with the radiant heat. Personally, if it was my house and I was figuring it out, I, you know, in my budget or whatever, I probably would have gotten even more towards the hybrid. But I think that for me personally, the radiant heat is probably the most effective way to go.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I just have a comment. And your recommendation is the hybrid, and you're the engineer, so I'm going to trust you, and I'm going to go with the hybrid.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think, I think, you know, Becky hit a lot of points on the head tonight, you know, about, you know, kind of going with the, with the, with the most energy efficient system, and that's where I'm leaning. It, it is, you know, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars initial cost more is what I'm calculating here roughly. But like I said, over twenty years, that's million dollar plus savings to the city in energy costs and improvements. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Okay. And so that's, that's the reason I'm going. I, I'm completely on board with what Carol says. I think that, I don't know if this should have been our decision in the first place. I think that just doing the research, I mean, this stuff is, is really complicated, and it's, it's difficult. And so I think that, you know, engineers maybe should be making, you know, these types of decisions and bringing them forth to us and, and giving us the information. But it, it's, it's pretty, pretty intense stuff once you start digging deep into it. And I am for the cost of the, of the center being fiscally responsible as well. The reason that I am for the solar and for increased tiers is because I did, like, like Becky said, I do see a payback there. And so I, I would go for the radiant.
Okay. Yes.
Last one. So on these payback schedules, does this include the additional cost for financing? Has that been factored into these payback schedules?
No. It's, it's purely the, that ratio of cost savings and the operating cost to the, the initial investment. So financing is not a consideration.
Okay, so in reality, these five point two, six point one, eight point five really aren't the true payback schedules. Because we have to figure in some of that financing costs as well for the increased cost.
But the radiant heat, I mean, no matter if you increase, I mean, they're still going to fall with, with payback. I mean, for a second, third...
Relative to each other, they, you know, they'd be about the same.
Okay, anyone else?
I kind of, I'm torn. I really like the hybrid. I've always liked the hybrid. But I understand about being fiscally responsible. There's no, there's absolutely nothing wrong with the radiant heat, you know.
Sure.
It would be a great payback in about five years, you know, so...
Right.
I could go either way with that, so, okay. Anything else? Any other questions?
So you need a direct answer from us tonight, what we're going with. So we need to decide, are we going base system, are we going radiant system, or are we going hybrid system? We got to, I think, give staff a, a direction tonight.
Is that what you're asking for, or are you...
Yes, please, yes.
Okay, I'll make sure that you, okay. So let's get a consensus, I don't, because it's not really an action item on here. But we can get a consensus to the floor.
Base.
Radiant.
Radiant.
I'm torn. Okay, I'll go radiant, okay.
Base.
Radiant.
But I'll go radiant, only because of the payback.
There you go.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Oh, I didn't...
I, I want the hybrid, but I will go radiant.
We all made compromises.
Right.
Right. Okay, so it looks like it's consensus is radiant.
All right, I will, uh...
And just to clarify too, with Marcy's request, can we get that, you know, kind of a solid where we're at number with, with the options that we've added?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll, I'll speak to the architect tomorrow to, to pass on this decision, so they can move out now with that mechanical design in mind. And I'll ask for an update too. And for now, until we get the guaranteed maximum price, the, the estimate that we'll continue to work from is that high, medium, low architectural estimate. Because, and I think I mentioned last time, that's what he uses to kind of set the, the bumper. So if it starts to get too expensive, that's where he has to come back and make some trade-offs to stay within that, that price tag. But when we talked to the, the C-MAR prospective bidders last week, one thing we, we took away from the contract was, last time we used to C-MAR, we asked for an early estimate. We flat out said, we don't want that because an early estimate is not definitive. We want that guaranteed maximum price when you've gone out, got firm bids, and come back. And until we get that number, we're never going to truly have that, that final engraved in stone cost that I, that I know all of us want. But I think the architect's working estimate is still the best version of that we have. And rather than have several different spreadsheets, I'd like to just use that every time there is an update, like this one, the mechanical system. We'll, we'll provide that to you all.
I can't stress, like, I'm looking for all-inclusive, every penny that you know of now. Not the, oops, I left that one out.
For the project, not just for the building.
The building, right, absolutely.
I think that's the big part, because we really, we want what the entire project is, not bits and pieces, you know, like what the street tonight's got.
Yes.
Being considered as part of the project cost.
That's captured.
Okay, thank you.
Before you leave, did you want to get any input as far as the rollout to the citizens at, at this point? Or no, you're still kind of...
I think we're ready to go in August. I, I'd certainly like your input as to a venue, a, the style that you'd like to, to include, who you'd like to participate, how we want to put the word out to the community. One thing I think we can do now is, now that we do have the decision on the, the mechanical system, to be able to, you know, talk to that, to have some visuals, or explain that we're going to use a system that's going to pay for itself in, you know, less than five years, and to talk up the, the savings to the city in the long run. So to, to hit on some of those features that may be of interest to the community. But I, I don't necessarily need a directive from you exactly when, where it's going to be, but I'd certainly like to, over the month of July, to, to kind of get something nailed down to plan for that event either early August or mid-August.
I guess my vote would be for late August. And my only reason for that is, I mean, our main form of communication is the connection, which hits at the beginning of August.
Okay.
So I sort of was hoping that we were going to be having a date, so it was a July and August promotion. I mean, some of these people don't read their connection until the second week of August.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm just concerned about how many people we're going to be notifying if we do it at the beginning.
Are we going to do postcards too as well to the entire community?
We should.
Similar to what we do for our ward meetings?
It's important enough, I think, yeah, we should.
I think what Marcy and I've learned from our ward meetings too is that you feed people and they come.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I think that...
Okay. Well, we will, I think we'll draft up a plan. I hope we can get to you shortly, within a week or so, but for some direction, whether it's the, the location, the timing, what have you, we'll, we'll be able to firm that up here before the middle of July.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say thank you for my education piece on heating and cooling? If we could address water heaters next, that's like right now. But I think you did a really good job. I think I get it now. So thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I just had a couple of final comments if I could. In response to Councilmember Whitman's comment tonight, as well as Councilmember Snetzinger at the study session, we definitely need to include the financing in that. I, I'm not going to recommend that Steve put that on his spreadsheet of construction costs, but we'll have a, some kind of ancillary document. I'll work with Jason to try to come up with. Maybe we can take that high, medium, and low number and then try to identify what an annual financing cost would be. Just so you can really simply multiply times twenty and know that that's the total cost of the, of the project if you chose to finance it. So we can definitely work on that in a parallel effort with, with finance.
Good. All right, thank you. Anything else? Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have communications with Antonio. We'll start with you.
Great. Our retreat, I thought was great. I really enjoyed it. I think the, the beginning is something exciting. I will not be here for the Fourth of July. I have to travel to New Mexico on family business. But, you know, that's it.
Thank you.
We, um, last week, many of us attended the Colorado Municipal League Conference in Vail. It is a great opportunity for us to network and to get some good education and resources. So I am thankful to the residents for providing that opportunity for us to get that. And then, I don't know if this will air in time, but with Fourth of July on Monday, we have the firecrackers and flapjacks. It's the Five K Walk, and it benefits the Northland Community Foundation. I would love to see people come out and walk or run in that event on July Fourth, and registration starts at seven.
Becky?
I have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Jordan on coming in first in the run-up at Vail with the conference that you all got to go to. And Carol, for being elected vice president. Do you have a big fancy title?
The Executive Board of CML.
Vice President of the Executive Board of CML. So I think those two things were really neat. I had to stay in town while everybody else in the city went and had fun. But I did enjoy getting the updates throughout the day. Like when Jordan won the race, that was really exciting. When you were elected, that was exciting. Some of your other events were kind of interesting too, but, um...
There wasn't any other.
Oh, you forget. Saturday, I went to the O'Meara Ford birthday party with the mayor and my husband, and Joe Brown. Sorry, now someone, Joe Brown. And I thought that was really awesome. I, they had a place where we could catch, like, trout. I picked out the hen that's going to come home with me. Gorgeous. It was just a really neat, neat, neat thing.
I thought that was a rooster.
No, the rooster was on top. My favorite part of Saturday was I got my picture taken at O'Meara Ford. So I'm a little excited, but it was really fun.
But with whom? You might as well. With Bonnie?
With Bonnie and Joe and the mayor.
There you go.
And then the guy in the really cool hat took a picture with me too. I had a great time. Didn't buy a truck, but had a great time. And last week, while I was interim mayor, which was really kind of fun, I happened to take Community Center Drive up. And I just want to tell you guys that I love the median. I love that, you know, the traffic went a lot smoother. It looks really good. I, I think that come Fourth of July, when everybody gets to see it and get involved in it and stuff, have to walk around it, all the residents are going to love it too. And I enjoyed looking at the houses today. So that's all I got.
Carol?
Okay, so I know I announced it before, but the first summer concert is this Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. Buckstein, a country band, six-thirty, E.B. Raines Park. The Northland Players will be putting on The Addams Family, the play. It's supposed to be really fun, and I read the premise, it sounds great. So it will be at the theater from, running from July fifteen to the twenty-third. And you have to call the rec center for tickets. And the CML conference, for me, was very fulfilling personally because it was a goal that I had been working for, for a long time. And, yes, so I feel very good about being elected vice president of CML. And the last thing is happy Fourth of July, and I hope I see a lot of residents out there, and I'm sure that I will.
Sure you will. I, I just want to echo the, the CML event. It's always a very good event, a lot of good networking, talking to folks, and discovering different things all the time. So, and it is exciting to have our own councilperson be a vice president and be a president of the board. So that's, that's wonderful, you know.
I feel like we should do it.
Yes, I think so.
Congratulations. That's good. That's very good.
I also, like Becky said, we attended the O'Meara Ford one-hundredth anniversary. And Bonnie was actually explaining to us that the first three years they were in business, Ford Company didn't offer franchises, I guess, to the different automobile dealerships. And so they really have been in business a hundred and three years. And so they are so, so excited about it, and they appreciate all the support from the city. And she couldn't have gone on more about how everything was. So I, it was nice that we were there.
Aren't they like the thirty-third?
Right, in the nation.
In the nation, Ford dealer. They're the thirty-third oldest dealer.
Right.
It's pretty interesting.
It is. Thank you.
Awesome. I just want to echo what everyone said. CML was great. It was great hanging out as a council. Fourth of July is really exciting. I plan to partake in the firecrackers and flapjacks, as I did last year. Something else that's really fun is the Pooch's Parade. Maya's Girl made an appearance last year, and we're working on her costume this year, and it starts at ten-thirty.
I'm a judge for that, so...
I know, I remember you two were last year.
So I take donations for that.
Maya's Girl's going to prove you guys wrong. Dumpin' is a really great band. I kind of follow them throughout the metro area, and they're playing at four o'clock, which is really exciting. Another save the day at the Cineon Park game, which is, Movies at the Park is coming. The Minions, July fourteenth at seven P.M., popcorn activities, and more, all free for families. So I hope to see you then.
Again, I'll echo the CML conference. I thought it was great hearing some other things other cities are doing. And sometimes you don't have to reinvent the wheel. You know, you can kind of just take bits and pieces and, and bring them back to your community and make your community great as well. And so I'm definitely excited about that. And also, I just want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. Be safe, don't drink and drive.
Hugh?
The one-hundred-and-twelve Station Area Master Plan for the cities of Thornton and Northland is holding a meeting Wednesday, June twenty-ninth. It begins at five-thirty from Malle Drive, at Malle Drive Elementary School. So just a reminder for those folks, it's just a public meeting to give out, give more information. And I've been struggling with this all day. And I, I'm sure that many of you have received some of the same kind of communication that I received this morning. And I'm actually, I've decided that I actually want the voicemail that I received this morning to be put into the public record. And I'm going to play the voicemail that I received this morning. As a resident of the city, as one of the elected officials of the city, I'm not going to put up with being bullied and threatened. And that's exactly how I felt by the voicemail that I received this morning. I want to thank those who came tonight and how respectful that they were this evening. And their tone was much different than the communications I've received previously. So hate to do this to you, it was kind of long, but I'm going to play it anyways because I feel that it needs to be in the public record. That's fine. Now I just got to get it going.
Hi, this is a taxpay citizen of Colorado, and I'm calling to let you know that we want you to let the dog baby go. We want that dog back with its disabled veteran. What you guys are doing is one of the most horrible things I've ever heard, and we're spreading the word. You guys are villains in, in the eyes of the people of America. You are ruining the city of Northland. Go check out your Facebook page and watch your rating drop. We're going to drop it down to a point five, and then we're going to get the attention of the radio stations because this is amazing for you to keep a dog in a closet for six-hundred-and-forty days without any exercise or sunshine. Taxpay citizens of Northland are going to suffer for your ignorance. But you could do the right thing and be the hero and stand up and say, this isn't right. There's a rescue that will keep this harmless dog until the federal case is over. For you guys to be stubborn and say that you would rather keep him in the cage for six-hundred-and-forty days and to continue charging this disabled veteran ten dollars a day, hoping that she won't pay so that you can't kill the dog, is despicable. We're not going to let you kill that dog. And if you do kill that dog, you better move out of Colorado because you will be harassed for the rest of your life. That dog is harmless, and what you're doing is wrong. Let that dog go. You will see us at the city council meetings every Monday from now on. This is not going away. It's just going to get bigger. You're going to get phone calls and emails every single day to the point where you're scared to answer your phone because it's going to be one of us demanding for you to do the right thing.
So again, I was pretty darn disturbed by that this morning, especially when it came through at ten minutes until six o'clock. You know, you get a phone call that early in the morning, you get a little scared about what the heck's going on, and you have a family. And again, I'm not going to put up with being bullied in my community. And again, I'm not gonna put up with being bullied in my community. Thank you for allowing me the time to.
Absolutely.
Put that forth and.
Thanks for sharing.
I apologize, but.
No, and I believe all of us have had, received, I had a, a call at midnight, same, same voice. I don't know who it is, but the same voice.
I had it today, too.
It was one of the people who spoke this evening.
Right, right. Absolutely.
The threats are kind of getting out of control.
Yeah, thanks.
And I'm surprised, I'm surprised by how, how threatening they really are, or the threatening calls that we're getting, you know?
Right. And not only that, they're also inti, trying to intimidate our staff. They call constantly, threatening jobs and that type of thing, which I think is disgusting. Very disgusting. So, thank you. Thanks, Kim, for sharing.
Mayor, could I add something on to that?
Yes, yes.
So when this went down tonight, for me personally, it's, and I, I bet others, it's really uncomfortable to have to sit here and not say anything. So I'm wondering when this happens and if it's going to continue happening, if either you can add that the council cannot speak on this because it's in litigation, or if the mayor needs to take that role, whatever. It kind of takes the ownership. I mean, it's all these people attacking us personally. We cannot, we didn't make the decision, and now we can't do anything about the decision. So if there're gonna just be some clarity, I, I feel like it just ended and then nothing is said, and it's really uncomfortable, and I have to hold my tongue because I want to go, eh, but I can't. So I would really appreciate maybe if either you, Cory, or the mayor could say something?
And we had that discussion.
And I'm happy to say something, but truthfully, the litigation process happens in the, in the courts. These folks are trying to create a story by advocating in this context. I can say that. I don't think it adds anything, but I'm happy to do so. And, you know, I'm happy to provide you with any information as this goes forward. I mean, as you know, no one mentioned tonight that the dog attacked a postman. No one mentioned tonight that Ms. Campbell wasn't the owner of the dog when all of this happened. No one mentioned tonight that she didn't identify herself as being a disabled veteran during the entire court proceeding at the district court level and at the municipal court level. Those are things that will be resolved in federal court. But really, this isn't the, the venue for that.
Well, Cory, it, it was never mentioned that it was a service animal either until.
After the fact.
It came out in the public, and they started, we started getting these kinds of things. I mean, we're getting emails as well, multiple emails from people who were not quite as nasty as the voicemail that we've all received. But it's, you know, when someone says, be scared, to me, that's a threat. And I, I just don't think that's appropriate. Yeah. Sorry to be a downer, y'all, and with all the, another good step.
I'm glad you prompted.
Yeah, I apologize.
So hopefully it don't continue to escalate. So, all right. Joanna?
I do have one quick item. I also attended the CML conference this last week as a staff member, and I think it's always a great conference with a lot of beneficial information. And in addition to Mayor Pro Tem Dodge being elected as the Vice President of the Executive Board, she also was tasked at the very last minute with introducing the Speaker of the Closing Session, which was awesome. I was very proud to be in the audience, and I seriously think she has a future to emcee a lot more events. She had the crowded stitches, and it was great. So that was wonderful to see.
Thank you, Joanna. That was very nice coming from you.
That's all. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a couple of items. I did not do a report last week, so I was at the CML conference, but I, I did send one out on the 17th. We had a, a couple of requests for sponsorships. I'm, I'm recommending that we do not approve one for Elite Coaching, Advancing Youth to Success. There's a three-page letter that was attached to the report. It is a startup organization. They really don't have much of a track record, and so I'm recommending we kind of wait and see with that organization. Then the second one was related to the Metro North Chamber of Commerce sponsorship for their golf tournament at the end of July. And I was just bringing that up, if you wanted to sponsor that at any level, we could do $200 for individual golfers, or a sponsorship for a, a specific hole or beverage cart for $500. We do have a couple thousand dollars, maybe $1,800 left in sponsorships, but again, that is for the rest of the year. So I just advance that to you, see if you want to sponsor anything at the Metro North Chamber.
Anyone have any ideas?
I would, I would like a little information on the startup that you're talking about. What is it? Who is it?
Okay, it's a, it's called Elite Coaching, and it's basically a startup community, or, or startup organization that basically talks about, he, he gives about a page and a half history about why he started the organization, but the bottom line is that they're looking at trying to do life skills for, I guess, underprivileged high school students, trying to identify where they can get coached up to be successful in, as adults when they get out. Some of them may not have good home life, may have other issues that they're dealing with. And so this individual talked about providing, you know, a, a rent for them to stay at a specific home in the community, office supplies, iPads for, for students, things of that nature.
Is this Kenny Cruz?
It is, yes.
I, I think that Kenny Cruz could use the money more than a golf course could.
Probably.
That would be my.
Probably.
Okay. Does anyone have any supportive conversation?
I think I'm a golf tournament. I'm a golfer, but if I want to golf in it, I think I could pay my own, my own way to go for the tournament, so.
I don't think we should do either one. I don't think we have, there's a big enough benefit for Northland.
Anybody else?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Kim. It seems like we sponsored quite a bit in the first six months of the year, and we need to slow it down just a little bit so we have funds to remain the rest of the year.
So, not, neither one?
Yeah, no, neither one.
Okay.
Sorry.
I have a question. You mentioned Elite. Is this one of those options, right, like, you either sponsor to help with office supplies or rent, or, I'm, I'm kind of confused, what exactly?
Yeah, yeah, great, great, great clarifying question. So he, he basically said he's got startup needs to start changing lives, and he's got four big dollar items. He's got $45,000 for one year's rent, $39,000 would sponsor 100 adolescents and young adults to complete their Checkmate package, which is described in the letter. $30,000 for office supplies and program development, $24,000 for tablets for student use to enhance their learning experience. So he's clearly not asking for us to fund all of those, or one of those things, but I think just asking for a donation, a sponsorship of sorts to help offset their startup costs.
Understood. Thank you.
So there isn't a guaranteed Northland connection on that one?
I don't think so.
No?
Not necessarily. It looks like it would serve students in Northland. He references Northland High School and et cetera, but it could serve a much wider audience, I would think.
I think I'm, I'm also okay on waiting to see what else is coming down the pike.
Anyone else? Good? I think waiting just sounds like.
Okay. And I would just remind everyone, we're, we are gonna have a, a study session on July 18th to talk about sponsorship policy, outside agency funding. Again, we'll have that discussion. I've got some background materials that I've collected from the clerk's office, and Susan Bock has helped me put together. And it'll really lead into our discussion about the budget, so we know what we want to fund for next year.
Thank you.